Call the meeting to order, please. Here comes, here comes Mr. Shepard.
Oh, yeah, because he's.
He went and copied somewhere.
You ready?
Call a roll, please.
Ms. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Reno?
Here.
Dr. McFadden? Mr. Monk? Ms. O'Neil? Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Here.
A quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, under Action Items, Item 5, under the Consent Agenda, tonight we have 5A, Approval of the Minutes, 5B, Approval of Bills for Payments. Oh, thank you. Let's rewind. Next on the agenda is Citizens' Comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you stand, come to the microphone, state your name. No, no, give them to me. That you come, you come to the microphone, state your name and address. Be mindful that you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. So be mindful that you may not receive a particular response to your inquiries here this evening. Last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the Chair. The agenda is now open for Citizens' Comments.
Jenny Sbrat, 1500 Mulberry, Mount Clemens. Good evening.
Good evening.
My, my name is Jenny Sbrat. I've been a teacher here in Mount Clemens for 22 years. I'm currently the Reading Interventionist and Literacy Coach at Seminole. And I am fortunate to get to see the insides of our classrooms every day and the wonderful work our teachers are doing in those rooms and the dedication of those teachers. I'm here today speaking to you because we have a staffing issue at Seminole. And during this difficult time, the staff at Seminole needs the support of all stakeholders, especially the Board of Education. There has been discussion about conducting more in-depth exit interviews with oversight from a third party. Well, I believe that is a good idea. I think there is an even more crucial piece. The Board needs input from the staff who are still employed here. The most important question needs to be, what will it take to keep you? This will allow the Board and administration to address the issues before it's too late and we lose more excellent teachers. Teachers are shown to have the greatest impact of any resource on student learning. So the teachers of this district need to be a priority, both keeping current staff and attracting new staff. Our students deserve excellent teachers. Again, we need your support. Attracting and retaining teachers need to be a high priority in both your educational and financial decisions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. The agenda is still open for Citizens' Comments. Still open for Citizens' Comments. Last call, Citizens' Comments. Hearing and seeing none, moving the agenda forward. Next on the agenda, under Action Items, 5, under Action Item 5A, we have the Approval of the Minutes, 5B, Approval of Bills for Payments, 5C, Approval of Out-of-State Field Trip.
Mr. President, I move to approve, uh, Item 5A, Approval of Minutes.
You don't, you don't want to approve the whole consent?
Probably have a discussion out of state, so.
Well, pull it, you pull that item off.
Let's pull, let's pull Item C off and I move to approve A and B.
Moved by Dr. McFadden to approve Consent Agenda Items 5A and 5B.
Support.
Second, Mr. Reno. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please, on Consent Agenda Items A and B.
Okay, Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Dr. McFadden, Agenda Item C, you pull it off, sir.
Yes, Agenda Item C, uh, Out-of-State Field Trip. Madam Superintendent, can you give some insight to this? The Out-of-State Field Trip?
Sure, um, this is a trip that our high school students take every year. They've been unable for the last two years to be able to go to Cedar Point. It's a very common trip among school districts in Michigan, probably Ohio, too, where there is Physics Day, so there's science experiments and some math, um, math problems and things that the students do, and they spend a day at Cedar Point. It's all set up for students.
Everything's set and ready to go?
Everything's set and ready to go.
All right.
Including sponsors to help pay for the trip.
Sponsor, transportation, all that stuff.
Yep.
I move to approve Item 5C, Out-of-State Field Trip.
Moved by Dr. McFadden to approve Consent Agenda Item 5C, Out-of-State Field Trip. Second, by Mr. Reno. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6, Personnel Committee. A, you want to take this over?
Sure, if you'd like to.
Well, I'll, I'll announce it and then I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Item 6, A, Teachers of the Year. One, MLK Academy, Ms. Mary Campbell. Two, Seminole Academy, Ms. Patricia Hill. Three, Mount Clemens Middle School, Mr. Charles Slack. Four, Mount Clemens High School, Ms. Danielle Stevens. Madam Superintendent.
Very proud of all of our Teachers of the Year. There, most of them are here tonight. We have a little reception and some gifts for them as well. But I've also asked their, um, school principals to come and speak about each of our Teachers of the Year, and I'd begin with Melissa Lasik, and she is going to talk about Mary Campbell. Melissa, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to dedicate this time to Mary Campbell, our Teacher of the Year at King Academy. As I reflect on the past year and the mountains that Mount Clemens has had to climb, I am beyond honored to have Mary Campbell as part of our team. At the beginning of the year, we struggled to fill vacant teaching positions. Ms. Campbell saw the struggle we were having to fill the positions in our Special Education Program and both our Great Start Readiness Program. She supported the classroom substitute, substitute teachers and paras with prep supplies and completed lesson plans for these classrooms. When I asked a student's mother about Mrs. Campbell, I could tell Mrs. Campbell was appreciated by the family. The mother of the child stated, she has been with my child for two years. When I found out she was going to be his teacher this year, I knew it was going to be a good year. She was always kept things, always kept things going, even during COVID. Mrs. Campbell has always been that I, the mother, am the biggest advocate. If something were to not feel right, then we need to address it. She's always in his corner and knows my child. Ms. Campbell has offered her time, flexibility, and energy this year at King Academy, and we thank you for that.
Melissa, we have a gift from the administration for Ms. Campbell. So next we have Sheri Malkiewicz. She is, um, coming, turning, serving as the interim principal over at Seminole Academy, and she's here to speak about Patty Hill.
Yep. I didn't know I was going to speak tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No one told me. But if there's anyone I can talk about, it's Patty Hill. She is, I have been at Seminole now for four weeks, and if I need to know anything, I ask Patty. She jumps in to help wherever is needed. She's doing things that are way well and above and beyond her contract time. She helped us, a kindergarten teacher left, and she took over and went in her room and cleaned it up and got it organized and helped, helped with lesson plans for other classes that needed assistance. I, I can't say enough about her. I hope that she stays. She is, she is excellent, and I think that she should get a million dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan is here to speak to Mr. Slack, who is not here today, and Ms. Stevens either. I don't see her yet, but.
They both had family commitments tonight, so I am honored to be able to present two of our Teacher of the Year. Every school building needs those cornerstone teachers, and these two are the epitome of that. They know the traditions, the legacies, the years of initiatives, and they're those teachers that everyone in the building can trust to give honest input, including myself. I know I depend on these two for a lot. Mr. Slack serves as a middle school English and Language Arts teacher and our Technology Coordinator for our teachers. He also teaches a coding and computer class as well. He's served this district as both a teacher and a teacher leader for many, many years and is seen and referred to by his colleagues as a thoroughbred. He is an even balance of traditional know-how and progressive practices. His students produce for him because he structures his assignments and his assessments into measurable chunks, where students get a ton of feedback on how to improve. His passion for reading is weaved daily throughout each learning experience, and the students reap that benefit of a very language-rich environment. His blend of humor and expectations makes for a great and very, very fun learning environment. So I'm very proud to present Mr. Slack as our Middle School Teacher of the Year. Another cornerstone of the secondary complex, she is that go-to person, is Danielle Stevens. She provides leadership as a content leader, a district and school improvement leader, and, um, you know, selfishly a dependable sounding board when this administrator needs some advice. Ms. Stevens is a high school English and Language Arts teacher, a former social studies middle school teacher, and a former this teacher and a former that teacher. She's been around a while, too. Every student in her classrooms are pushed to succeed. She is a teacher that wants to continuously learn, build her craft. She willingly tries new best practices from our staff professional learnings and willingly shares with, and most importantly, is willing to learn from her colleagues. Most important and above all else, when you visit her classroom, you feel like a welcomed guest to a classroom that feels like you just walked into someone's family home. She is the mother, and her students are her family. Their connections are very, very strong, and her students know that she is a safe haven. So I'm very, very proud to present Ms. Mrs. Danielle Stevens as our High School Teacher of the Year.
Now accepting the awards on behalf of Mr. Slack and Ms. Stevens will be Mr. Duncan. Congratulations to all our Teachers of the Year, Ms. Campbell, Ms. Hill, Mr. Slack, and Mrs. Stevens. This is something that you were selected amongst your colleagues and your peers as the best of the best, so congratulations to you all, and continued good luck and success, and I'm glad you're here. At this point in time, I would like to take a eight-minute recess so we can, um, celebrate what the Teachers of the Year, there's a few light refreshments over there, so we will recess for eight minutes. Call the meeting out of recess?
Oh, my God.
The next item on the agenda, Item 7, Executive Session for the Purpose of a Personnel Matter. The Chair would entertain a motion to go into Executive Session for the Purpose of a Personnel Matter.
So moved.
No, we don't need, we, this is, we don't need this one. This is the, um, the negotiation.
So it's, so it's open then?
He's resigned.
So, okay, so that shouldn't.
Let's eliminate, okay.
Okay. After review, well, Item 7, Executive Session for Personnel Matter, um, the, that item has been overruled, that it's not necessary or needed, which takes us into Item 8, the non-renewal of administrative contracts for the position, no, no, no. Non-renewal and acceptance of resignation for the Seminole Academy Principal's position. Am I correct?
Um, what we're doing is we're accepting the resignation. We're not doing the non-renewal, so we're going to amend the agenda.
Which better than what happened earlier.
Yeah.
Okay. Agenda Item 8 needs to be reworded. It is not a non-renewal of an administrative contract. It will be in place of the non-renewal of administrative contract. It will be to accept the resignation of the Seminole Academy Principal's position.
Do you need a motion to amend that?
Uh, yes, we need a mission, motion to amend that agenda item to have that agenda item being Approval of Resignation of Seminole Academy Principal.
Mr. President, I move to amend, uh, Agenda Item Number 8, for the Approval of Resignation of Seminole Academy Principal.
Support.
Moved by Dr. McFadden, second, Ms. Ms. Collins, I'm sorry. Looking at the, uh, to approve the resignation of the Seminole Academy Principal. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor?
Explanation, I mean, I'm.
There is no need, there is no need for a non-renewal because there's a resignation.
Okay.
And there was no need to go into Executive Session because that was the purpose of the Executive Session, the personnel matter, not here, uh, offer the resignation, so therefore the Executive Session was not necessary, nor is it a non-renewal of the contract as a resignation instead.
Okay, another question. So does that mean that this employee is still part of the district until?
Till June.
June 30th.
Yes, they're part of the district until the resignation effective June 30th.
And was that? I just feel we should have had explanation before this. We should have had some type of upfront saying how this is going to work, stuff that been at the table.
I, I understand.
You get what I'm saying?
I understand, yeah.
It's confusing.
I understand, but.
It's very confusing right now.
It's confusing, but it can be worked out. There was no need for the Executive Session.
Oh, no, I, I get that.
Yeah.
I get that, but, you know.
And then there, it was non-renewal because we got a resignation instead for that position. That's why.
Okay.
And I, I agree it should have been, but it's, um, no need for the non-renewal, but to approve the resignation. It's been approved and accepted.
Yeah, yes.
And the resignation came in after the agenda was established, Mr. Monk.
So we had a motion to amend the agenda, and then we're going to have the, the vote or a movement, um, someone got to make a motion.
Yeah, right, yeah. It's on the floor right now, is to amend the agenda, to put that resignation of.
On the agenda.
On the agenda, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any other questions, comments, or concerns, the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resignation of the Seminole Academy Principal.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Second, Member Reno. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? The motion on the floor is to approve the resignation of the Seminole Academy Principal effective June 30, 2022. Mr. Monk, that's all you have.
Yes, why not have this resignation effective immediately instead of June 30?
He was placed on leave through June 30th.
Okay, that's placed on leave to figure out everything, so I'm, I guess my question is why not effective immediately? Why are we waiting until June 30?
Um, he's actually still working for us. I've got him working on some projects for us from home, so we are using him. I, I understand what you're saying, um.
Yeah, I, I, I've raised this before, I disagree with that. I mean, we're going to cut ties, let's cut ties and move on. I mean, that's just my opinion, so I'm not understanding why not accept it immediately because we put him on leave to figure out what's going on. We figured out what's going on, we know what happened. Why not effective immediately instead of June 30?
Mr. Monk, I think I can speak to that a little bit because it was contractual writing. Each party had, I think it was 90 days.
Correct.
To either resign, uh, non-renew or resign or whatever, so all we doing is just hold up or end up on the contract.
Yes.
Okay. Because if it was, if it was a non-renewal, it would be for June 30, 2022. If we voted, if, if we had to go to the non-renewal that we voted on considering last month, if that was the situation tonight, it would not, the, the non-renewal would not be immediately, it would be non-renewal effective at the end of the contract.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get that, I'm just not, I don't feel comfortable with this employee still working for us based on what has happened, in any capacity. That's my, that's my feeling, so I'll just, okay.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? The motion on the floor is to approve or accept the resignation of the Seminole Academy Principal effective June 20, June 30, 2022. Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is Item A, excuse me, Item 8, is to accept the resignation of.
Special Ed Director.
The special, Special Ed Director and HR Director effective April 22nd, 2022. So since that's not spelled out on the agenda, I'd like a motion to have Agenda Item A, accept the resignation of the Special Education Director and HR Director effective April 22nd, 2022.
We're, we're moving to agenda amendment.
Yes, sir.
Amen the agenda.
Yes, I know what you meant.
So moved, so moved.
Moved by Member Reno.
Support.
Seconded by Member Walker to add Agenda Item 8A, to accept the resignation of the Special Education Director and HR Director effective April 22nd, 2022. Are there any questions on the motion on the floor to amend, to amend the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. The Chair would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of the Special Education Director and HR Director effective April 22nd, 2022.
So moved.
Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Second, Member Reno. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Dr. McFadden?
Yes, I do have a question because now this goes back to Mr. Monk's situation. Is this a boilerplate contract? It just says the same as the Principal's, or is it a different type of contract?
It's very similar to the Principal's.
Okay, so is it a, a 90-day, 30-day? How does that set up?
Um, well, it is set up for 90 days, but this is a voluntary resignation from a staff member. She's accepted a position somewhere else.
Okay, but didn't Mr., uh, who was the principal at Seminole? Locas, wasn't that voluntary, too?
It was, but this was, it's still, we had to honor his contract. Ms. Tomlinson is wishing to be released from her contract early.
Okay, so we just accommodating her, her wish to be released early?
Yes, we are.
Because we, because we like, okay, that's fine.
Yes, we could.
Yeah. I'm just asking a question, that's all, because I want to make sure there's no gray area in the room.
No.
You know, it's clear.
Other than my hair, yeah, I think we're good.
At least you have hair. Okay.
Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor?
I'll break ice on that, and I see you rubbing your head as you're talking.
Just, Ms. Tomlinson, thank you for your service to the district, to our staff.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, the motion, the motion yet?
Oh, that was my comment, so, before we even get to it.
Okay.
Just wanted to say thank you.
Mr. Monk?
Personally, I don't want to accept your resignation, Ms. Thompson, um.
We can vote no.
But personally.
Things still stands.
Personally, I will vote to accept your resignation. For the record, you will be solely missed in this district. You have a heart of gold in all my years in dealing with you, all the way back, but when my kids was here, my wife started working here, so we're talking about 20-plus years. You have always put kids first in whatever you do, say, perform, and thank you for your just highly, highly professionalism, um, and always, um, speaking truth to power. And I love you like a sister, um, and, but I do understand that you have to do what you have to do for your family, um, and I made this comment before, you know, you just can't put a price on a peace of mind. So I wish you good luck in the future. That don't mean that you're going anywhere, because you'll still be invited to all the house parties, so, um, good luck in whatever life brings you, and I know you're going to be successful, so, thank you.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? I don't know, what, 23 years ago, maybe, I'm sitting at this side of the table, introducing a young, new teacher to the district, Ms. Stacy Thompson. I had a big Afro there, and I can't remember, um, what, what your hairstyle was then, but didn't we make a pact that? But didn't we make a pact that we was going to retire together? But I echo the sentiments that have already been spoken prior to me about your dedication, your service, your commitment to the district and the families that you served in this district. And you will be sorely missed and wish you all the best in what you do in future endeavors. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing, seeing, none. Call or roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Chicken.
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Absolutely not.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, closed session for the purpose of negotiations update. The Chair would entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of negotiation updates.
So moved.
Moved, Member Reno.
Support.
Second, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing, seeing, none. Call or roll, please.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. The meeting goes into executive session at 10, 7:10. Will come out of executive session and complete the remainder of the agenda.
All right, let's make a motion to come out of executive session. No, I wasn't joking. We got a call in here. Let's go ahead.
Support.
Support, okay. Call or roll, please.
Motion?
I made a motion.
Okay.
Second by Ms., uh...
Walker?
Ms. Walker.
Okay. Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
And Ms. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. The meeting is out of executive session at 8:15. Next on the agenda, Item 10, product donation agreement with Dick's Sporting Goods, Inc. Madam Superintendent?
Hold on, let me find it. Okay, I'm just very, very proud and happy to announce that Dick's Sporting Goods, they had some brand-new equipment that they were changing a logo on. And so, it was in their warehouse. It was from the Dick's Sporting Goods in Troy or Rochester. And they were going to donate it to a Troy school. Well, our Sheri Michaelowitz, our new interim principal over at Seminole, her daughter works at Dick's Sporting Goods, called Sheri and said, "Do you think Mount Clemens might use this?" Well, our kids and our teachers here at the high school are very, very excited about the dumbbell sets, the kettlebells, the fusion strength systems, the hexagon dump. They got $6,500 worth of brand-new weights. And it's wonderful, and the kids are really happy, and we're happy too. So, we're asking the board to accept this donation.
Chair would entertain a motion for the board to accept product donation agreement with Dick's Sporting Goods, Inc. Moved by Member Reno.
Support.
Second, was that Member Walker or Ms. Collins?
Collins.
Member Collins. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? I'm totally in support of this, but with the lack of physical education teachers, who, what structured environment are these students going to be exposed to utilize this equipment?
The lack of physical education teachers are at Seminole, and kids won't be using weights at Seminole because they're too little, but we do have PE teachers here, and they are also using it for our sports teams as well. So, our basketball team, our volleyball teams, our girls' basketball teams, our football. So, all of those students are using the weights. Track.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
I know you probably told the great company at Dick's, "Thank you." Did that was in a letter format or just a phone call?
Well, we had to, I actually had to go down there and say hi and thank them, and we will be sending a letter out as well.
Okay, I mean, myself as one of the board members, I like to say thank you also if you want to put my name on that thing, whatever.
Sure, I will sign the letter from the Board of Education, if that's all right.
Mr. President or whatever. It doesn't matter to me if we have to make a motion on that or...
Yeah, we'll do that.
Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing, seeing, none. Call or roll, please.
Okay, Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill? I'm sorry, absent. Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Information note, Item 11, open schools of choice beginning April 21, 2022 and ending September 9, 2022. Madam Superintendent?
So, this is something that the board needs to approve. Twice a year, we open our school of choice window. It always closes the Friday, the first Friday after the first day of school. So, it, in September. So, that's when the school of choice window has to close, so we can't accept school of choice students after that date until we open the window again where students of choi, school of choice students can come in in, after the first semester after county, so. So, we're asking the board to approve this. I'm not sure if they've approved, if you've approved this in the past. Yes, you have?
Yes, we have.
So, we would like to open the window tomorrow, starting tomorrow, so that we can start getting just some advertisements out there, some things, some McCombs Daily, some postcards, those kinds of things. We do have, or at least the last time I looked, we had 100 school of choice students in our district. So, of our 800 and some students, about 100 of them at, the last time I looked were school of choice. I can get you more up-to-date numbers if you need them.
The school would entertain a motion relative to Agenda Item 11, opening the school of choice beginning April 21, 2022 and ending September 9, 2022.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Second by Member Reno. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
I was just really excited to learn that September 9 is a Friday this year because that's my birthday.
Oh.
Statistically, the most common...
So, is that why you pulled your planner out?
I did, I thought it was Thursday.
Yeah, no, there you go.
Cheap birthday plug, man. Freedom.
Are you going to be, how, where are you going to expand advertising, open school of choice?
We send, actually, we send flyers out all over. I'm not sure exactly where all of that goes. That's what I have Becky McLennan. She works with us and sends them out to addresses with kids that are school age within a certain radius. We also advertise in the McCombs Daily. One of the things we've been thinking about, I'm going to get some prices on, is some of those signs on the highway. I don't know if they make any difference or not, but...
Under the provisions of the school of choice, if a student, a Mount Clemens student, want to go somewhere else, if a district has adopted the open enrollment school of choice resolution, we don't, they don't need a waiver from us.
Nope.
To leave the district because it's under that timeline.
Yes.
After that timeline or before that timeline is when the leaving, the district that the student is leaving from has to...
Sign a waiver.
Say, sign a waiver for them.
Yep.
Yes. Make sure you're obviously clear on that.
Yep, you still are.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing, seeing, none. Call or roll, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Informational items, Item 12, information out of the Business Committee. A, financial reports. Are there any questions on the financial reports? I know it's probably was vetted by the Finance and Business Committee. All right, next, Superintendent's reports. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. I'd like to begin my comments by acknowledging our four wonderful Teachers of the Year. I see Mary Campbell still here, Patty Hill are still here. It's nice to see you, and thank you for coming to our board meetings. Mary Campbell, Patricia Hill, Chuck Slack, and Danielle Stevens. I'm really, really proud of these teachers, and last night's recognition just, I don't know. It was really special. They actually, at the opening remarks, told a story about Danielle Stevens and a letter that one of her students wrote for her, which was really a wonderful letter. So, these are teachers, they have gone, as you heard from their administrators who spoke, they've gone above and beyond for our kids and for each other and for our school. So, thank you very, very much, and I hope you like the cutting boards. I'd also like to thank Stacy Tomlinson. Stacy already, I told her she had to stay. I'd like to thank Stacy Tomlinson for her years of leadership here at Mount Clemens. I'm going to try to say this without crying. Her leadership and friendship will be sorely missed. I'm sure she won't miss.
Her leadership and friendship will be sorely missed. I'm sure she won't miss those 7:00 AM calls from me about whatever is going on, going on here. It's always something. I think Seminole staffing issues is one of those things. Let's see.
Just thanking Seminole staff for all you've done. I, we know...
For going above and beyond. Can you handle it?
I can handle it. I'm not talking about Stacy. I can handle it. Okay. So, really, thank you, teachers at Seminole, and King, I know that you've helped out too. And here at the high school, everyone's working their preps. We're all, you're all just giving 100%, and thank you very much for that. I'd also like to give a shout-out to our kindergarten teachers. Is anybody from kindergarten behind that pillar? No. They worked really, really hard on kindergarten roundup. It was a great evening. It was a really, really nice event, and I'm really looking forward to having some new kindergarten faces coming in, playing in our playgrounds, and learning in our classrooms. And I miss my kindergarten morning hugs in the mornings now that I'm not at Seminole every single day. That sure was a great way to start my day when those little guys would come by and give me a hug. I'd like to welcome Sheri McCallowitz to our Seminole family. We really appreciate having her there and just thank her for her leadership in helping us out just to get us through June. And I'd also like to welcome Linda Conti back to our family. She has taken on a long-term subposition at King and is much-needed. So, we really appreciate having Linda Conti back. Testing season's in full swing, so please make sure that your kids have a good night's sleep and a good hearty breakfast. And that's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Agenda Item 14, committee reports. Any additional information coming out of the Business and Finance Committee?
Can I just mention two quick things?
Absolutely, sir.
Bids for transportation came in, and we have four of them. We're in the process of reviewing them. But under initial reviews, I think we're going to probably have a new company, I'm sure, and looks like, and save, we'll be able to save money too. So, that's, that's a good thing. And the other, in food service, we actually did surveys of students over the last week, and we're working hard to improve quality of meals and student participation. And I've been working closely with the Regional Director from SFE and our Food Service Director on trying to make those improvements.
Any questions?
Well, I'm glad Bill jumped in there and mentioned something because we missed that Item 12. And Superintendent said it's testing time. I hope the children get a good night's sleep and eat a hearty breakfast. So, at the last meeting, we was talking about, and I think Bill, Bill, you're going to recap on that, about trying to get some meal preps or foods during the day for the kids that missed breakfast.
Yes, we are having, we're talking about breakfast carts here at the high school. And we have a meeting tomorrow with SFE. I've already talked to the high school principal about how that might work. And so, yes, we're going to try to make it so it's more accessible to students, so more participate in the breakfast program, especially here at the secondary.
Jay, I missed anything?
Okay, Mr. Lindenberg, Community Coalition?
Our April drug take-back day will be on the 30th at the Wilson Gym. It'll be drive-through since the gym is currently our temporary library. It'll be running from 10 to 2 again from the Coalition. Our goal is always to bring in at least 20 pounds of unused or expired prescription drugs, liquids, pills, anything we can keep out of our children's hands and out of our waterways. We'll be appreciative. So, please bring those to Wilson Gym on the 30th. If you did not get a chance to go to the Easter Extravaganza downtown a few weeks ago, someone said they haven't seen downtown that busy since Farm City Week, if that tells you something. They gave away 400 girls' and boys' bikes. They gave away tricycles. They gave away, I think, 20,000 stuffed eggs of candy. These streets were lined with little ones. It was quite amazing if you didn't get a chance to go down there. It was really, it's nice to see downtown full again and people enjoying and families coming back. The businesses are recording profits they haven't seen in a long time, which is good. Maiden Michigan Show will be the Friday and Saturday of May 6 and 7. If you guys have been to Maiden Michigan, those are all handmade crafts and items from people from the state of Michigan. So, that'll be happening on the 6th and 7th in downtown Mount Clemens. And that's also, the Saturday on the 7th is when the farmer's market will open for the first year, for a weekend of the year. And that runs until, what, the Saturday before Thanksgiving, right, Earl? Because I know we always go on opening day or first week of June and hang out and do stuff, so. A lot of things will be happening now. We have a really good concert schedule this year, both for the river and for downtown. So, there'll be a lot of fun things to do for our kid, and the kids can get involved. They want to call the DDA. They need volunteers to set stuff up, so there's ways to get community service that are fun on the nights and weekends during the summer. So, they can call the DDA, 469-4168, if they want to get some community service and get experience working for the community. We also need seasonal laborers. I know the Public Works Department is hiring. If you're 18, have a valid driver's license, they can work at the Streets Department doing grass cutting and planting and things like that, and I know that Metro Beach is also hiring. So, there are job opportunities for our teens this summer if they are looking to get outside and get a job. And that is my report. I do not have an educational foundation report for this month either.
Thank you.
Any questions on behalf of answering, otherwise, have a lovely evening.
Thank you, sir. Curriculum personnel, any additional information to report from the Curriculum Personnel Committee?
Nope.
Any additional information from the Policy Committee? I think we're dealing with the second reading at the next meeting of several policies. There was a legislative meeting, and they were talking about, there should be a resolution in front of you. This is something that, one of the things that were talked about at the committee. And just, I put it out there for the board's information. Sometime in the future, you think this is something that we want to put on, on the agenda and support it. It's the resolution opposing Let Michigan Kids Learn. This is a initiative that's being hosted by, led by Betsy DeVos. It's a whole initiative about funding, public dollars go to fund private charters and vouchers for private, using public dollars to go, for vouchers to go to private and other type of institutions of learning. The Michigan School Boys Association is opposed to the Let Michigan Kids Learn. So, this is just a sample resolution that they put out and the next board. Because no one probably had enough, an opportunity to read through this. I got it like at 12:30 this afternoon. I think I emailed it to the board, but it's just an FYI. And future board members, you feel it's something we're going to put on the agenda to be a part of with this resolution. We can do so at that time. Okay, next, board comments. Mrs. Collins?
I have no comments.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Ms. Reno?
Congratulations for our Teachers of the Year. Well deserved, and thank you to all of our staff, teachers, all wonderful. Regarding this resolution, I'd like to stress the importance of the issue of ensuring that we are holding our elected officials at every level accountable, just for ensuring that every kid has the proper access to a free, high-quality public education regardless of demographics. Beyond that... Beyond that, I think stay healthy, everyone. Um, we got a little too caught up in the whirlwind of COVID for a couple of years and we forgot about the other germs and bugs that are out there. So, you know, wash your hands, sneeze responsibly, drink multivitamin, and don't end up with a sinus infection like I have right now. Stay safe, Patty, I'll be there.
Thank you, Ms. Reno. Ms. Walker?
Um, congratulations to our teachers of the year. Um, it's funny, my oldest son had Mary Campbell. He texted me a little while ago and said, if you see Mrs. Campbell, tell her I said hi. I said, hey, she may teacher of the year. He goes, way to go! So congratulations from him. And thank you for all you're doing when things are hard right now, to take care of our kids and love our kids. Nobody loves kids like Mount Clemens teachers love their kids. I have kids that approve of it, so um thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Mr. Monk?
Just want to say uh thank you to all of our teachers of the year and all of our educators of the year. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Dr. McFadden?
Earlier, I I questioned the contract resignation of Mrs. Stacy and she's not here. So she probably sees on YouTube. It's not that I don't love Stacy, I do and I'm going to miss her. So I'm going to say um the best to her. Um, Mr. Lucas, best to him also. This resolution is talking about Let Michigan Kids Learn. I don't want to be um a stickler on this, but I don't want a play of words for people to think that sounds like a good idea. As you see, this resolution points out unconstitutional tax credits. Unconstitutional backdoor payments to private institutions. Now, I don't mind about a private institution trying to help our children learn better. I don't mind one bit. I don't care if they have great tutors to make things work. But when it comes to our tax dollars, I I'm really big on that. Um, that's just me. I don't like paying for things I don't have to pay for, especially when we have the same quality teachers. Matter of fact, better teachers in public education. Because most of the private institutions or those charter schools will try to grab or gobble up any other teacher to do the program. So this is really big. That's why I mentioned that, because this is exactly what it is, a backdoor way of trying to take more of our money. Okay, if you don't know what your taxes are, look at your tax bill because our public school teachers that are doing our our public service right now, they are public servants. They don't get paid a lot. They come in, they do their best, and they work with the best they have. So I I ain't mean to get on the soapbox about this. But at the, at the end of the day, this type of stuff right here is, it's just, it's criminal. It's absolutely criminal. And it also puts a a black eye on our teachers that works in public education. And now, now people know or realize how much our public, our teachers in public education, how much they put on the line, how much they do and how hard they work. They bring up these charters and they say these charters are doing better. Stat, statistics show that's not true.
Not true.
Okay, if you want to be data-driven, look at the data. That's not true. So just take the hood we, hood we go off and stop being fooled with it. And that's, that's about my, you know, like I said, I'm not going to preach on that. But this here is like, yeah, this is going to get some mascara when they do stuff like this. So anyway, all to our teachers, thank you, okay? For, you know, like I said, you're guys are public servants. The stuff you do is hard work. And this stuff right here is like saying our teachers not doing their job and that's bull crap. All right, that's, that's my comments.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. I would like to put a motion on the floor to support this resolution opposing Let Michigan Kids Learn voucher initiative. Moved by member Reno, supported by Dr. McFadden. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor to support the resolution opposing the Let Michigan Kids Learn voucher initiative? Hearing and seeing none, call roll, please.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill? Um, okay, Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, board members. Um, I'd like to say thank you uh to give our regard from Dick's and the individual who brought us that that connection uh from Dick's for their generous donation. Uh, I'm pretty sure we'll get a lot of use, uh, students will get a lot of use uh for that equipment, uh, from that generous donation from from Dick's. And hopefully that puts us in line for maybe some other things, gifts coming down the line. Kudos and thank you to the teachers of the year for, again, like I stated earlier, you were put in that position by your colleagues and by your peers. So that that shows in my mind how well-respected and how, and how with high regards your peers and your colleagues hold each of you in in terms of what you do on a daily basis for the students and the families that you serve here in the Mount Clemens Community School District. So thank you to that and thank you to the entire teaching staff uh for what you do for the families and students that you serve in the Mount Clemens Community School District. I was glad to hear uh that we received more than two bids for the transportation. It's been a while uh since we've gotten more than two legitimate bids. We've gotten bids, but most, you know, when you look through them, they weren't even legitimate bids. So it's good and hopefully the four, when we vet and uh do our due diligence that we we have some good competitive vendors that uh can save us some money and and get the job done. Uh, also was glad to hear that we have some vendors uh for the food service, uh R F P. That R F P is is quite a massive undertaking because the state has their fingers and hands all over uh the the R F P before you can put it out uh for food service uh bids. So I'm glad to see that uh we were able to acquire uh some bids uh from vendors uh for that activity also. Um, I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Pratt for her comments this evening. They were well, well-spoken, well-taken because you're not the only one that has that opinion about that we should be talking uh with teachers that that are still here, talking with them to find out what it is that 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 we're missing, or what it is that you need uh from support for us. So thank you uh for articulating that. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by member Walker. Seconded by member Reno. Call roll, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at 8:40 PM.